One second, the computer keeps signing me out. Okay, we will go ahead and resume. We have no public comments for this evening. So with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consented as presented.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call? Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest? Aye, motion carries. We're gonna move on to point number four, strategic plan update, the strategic goal number two. Alright, I'm going to invite my team up. So tonight, we are going to present on strategic plan goal two, which is learning environment. Do you just want us to let you know when to switch slides, or? Oh, is there a clicker up there? Alright, excellent. We will see if the microphone is cooperating or not. Okay, so strategic plan number, strategic goal plan two is cultivating a safe, engaging, authentic learning environment that promotes student confidence and growth. So with me tonight, you can switch to the next slide, Ms. Lustig, alright. We're going to look at the student services departments, as well as the different initiatives that go along with student services. In October, we spoke a lot about special education. Ms. Lustig's going to go over special education again. Ms. Bonnerick is going to lead us through the multi-tiered system of supports programs that we have going on throughout the district. Ms. Martinez is going to talk about multilingual services. Ms. Pelnarsh will go through the school health services. And then if you switch to the next slide, Ms. McCarrow's gonna round out our presentation about the various different services that we provide by talking about those different kind of ancillary services, the section 504 plans, extracurricular supports, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social emotional learning. And if you switch once more, alright, so Ms. Lustig is going to talk about special education. Is that working okay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good enough. Yeah, I think you have to be close to it.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, good evening, I am Jo Lustig, I'm the Assistant Director of Student Services, and I'm gonna do a brief overview on special education. On this first slide, you can see some of our responsibilities. To include child fine obligations, we oversee the implementation of individual education plans through IDEA. We provide students with a free and appropriate public education. We ensure students are educated with their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent possible in the least restrictive environment that I'm gonna talk about in the next slide. We provide professional development to staff. We supervise and evaluate the student services staff, and we also collaborate with our Grundy County Special Ed Cooperative Administration in our therapeutic day schools on programming for students. Okay, this next slide is a snapshot of our students by their placement option or educational environment. As you can see on this slide, we have three hundred and seventy-seven students that are in general education, eighty percent or more of their school day. So this is just kind of a continuum of the different placement options we have. The ones all the way over to the left, those are early childhood placement options, so they are a little bit different. Students can have those placement options from the ages of three to five. Then, once they hit five to age of twenty-two, then they have the other placement options. That starts with general education, forty to seventy-nine percent, that's one hundred and forty of our students. Like I mentioned, general education, eighty percent or more of the school day, which is three hundred and seventy-seven of our students. General Ed, less than forty percent of their school day, is seventy-one of our students. And then we have students twelve that attend a private day school, and we have nine that attend special ed, hundred percent in a public day program. That would include our therapeutic day programs, would be the private day, and that special ed, one hundred percent would be our Grundy County programming. So like I said, you can see most of our students, ages five through eighth grade. Three hundred and seventy-seven are in the eighty percent or more in gen ed, which is what we'd like to see as the least restrictive environment. When you look at the early childhood programming, our blended class is the code thirty, which is that push in greater than or equal to six hundred minutes, and that's seventy-four of our students. And then the other one that you see that has seventy-one students, that is code twenty-three, which is our early childhood programming.
So, is there three hundred and seventy-seven total school kids, and then it's broken down?
Yep, no, that's just in that category, it's three hundred.
So how many kids total then are, if we add all that up, about?
Seven, oh, I did add it up.
Oh, you have that number.
Seven hundred and seventy-four is the total there. And then if you wanna break up, like I said, it kind of breaks up between early childhood placements and then children, kindergarten through eighth grade.
And our goal is to have the majority of our students in that big blue bar, that's our goal. So you'll see that is where we have the majority of our students, because it's saying that they're being educated in the general education for the vast majority of their school day. So that's our goal for every student, but we also know that students may need more intensive or individualized support, and that's where some of those other areas come into play.
So what are, so the kids are the single digits, so the five, two, two, nine, how are they, are they, can you explain again what, where they were at?
Yeah, so if you look at the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, so all the way to where it says thirty-three, pull out. So those are all the early childhood programming. So in early childhood, our goal is to have the majority of the students in the codes that say thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, or thirty-three. That's saying that they're in the general education preschool environment.
Okay.
And then the twenty-three is that they're in a separate early childhood class, twenty-seven is that they come in for walk-in speech. So they, they're, they don't have any of our other programs, they just come and see us for speech.
The next slide talks about students by disability, so there's thirteen different special education categories that students can be eligible for services. We have eleven that are up there, briefly, I can go through those. Autism, we have sixty-eight students. Developmental delay is two hundred and ninety-one, emotional disturbance is thirteen, hearing impairment is seven, intellectual disability is six students. Multi-need, multi-disabilities is four, other health impairment is eighty-three. Specific learning disability, we have a hundred and fifteen students, speech and language impairment is one eighty-six. And then traumatic brain injury is one, and visual impairment is three. The other two categories are deaf-blindness and orthopedic impairment. So as you can see, the majority of our students right now, two hundred and ninety-one, are developmental delay. That eligibility can start at age three, and it goes up to right before their tenth birthday. So that covers, when you're looking at developmental delay, there's five different areas they can qualify under for developmental delay. Social-emotional, communication, cognitive development, physical, and adaptive development. So they can qualify in one of those areas, all five, depending on the data collected for their eligibility. Right before their tenth birthday, we would have to do a reevaluation to determine if they're still gonna be eligible for special education services. And if they are, then we would look in another eligibility category if they're still eligible. Some of the more common categories then, what after DD, could be that other health impairment, the select, specific learning disability, speech and language impairment, and then autism are the ones that have, are the next higher eligibility areas here for us in the district. Any questions about that one?
The other thing I would point out on this slide, so if you add up all of those across, it will be higher than that number that Jill gave you from the last slide, because a student could be eligible in one or more areas of this.
Yeah, they can have more than one eligibility, so a student could have another health impairment, and their secondary eligibility could be speech and language impairment as an example. Some students have one eligibility, but they could have multiple, primary and secondary. The next slide talks about our staff. Each of our buildings, depending on number of students with IEPs and programming, can have a variety of different special education teachers. At the primary center, there are four early childhood special education teachers and eight blended classroom teachers. The blended teachers have dual certification of gen ed and special education. At Ox Sable, we currently have four special education teachers, the same at Jones and Menucha Elementary. Walnut Trails has three special ed teachers, and MIS has six, with the junior high having seven. That is our current programming.
Are we fully staffed, are we? Are we fully staffed, or do we need more, or?
Currently, for our current needs for this school year, we're fully staffed.
We have, we had a couple of mid-year staff leaving for various different reasons mid-year. So at our intermediate, we have a new teacher beginning right after break. And at our junior high, the staff is currently absorbing the caseload of the students that the staff member had passed away from.
So are these teachers hard to find? I mean, we're always looking for, you know, push drivers and teachers and cafeteria, but are these a little bit harder than?
Yes, especially that early childhood component. There are not many universities in our area that have early childhood programs. And then special education teachers are, yep, they're not, they're not an easy area to find, so it's a specialty.
The next slide goes into our related service providers, and I listed how many we have in each building. We are not fully staffed, we are still trying to hire one speech and language pathologist. So you'll see some of the buildings might say like a point four, point six, because we are having to assist in some of the buildings. So at MPC, we have two full-time social workers, four point four speech pathologists, a building case manager, which is new to that building this year, and a school psychologist. At Ox Sable, we have two school social workers, two speech pathologists, a building case manager, point five, and a school psychologist, point five. Jones has two full-time social workers, one point six speech pathologists, a point five building case manager, and a point five school psychologist. Menucha Elementary also has two social workers, two speech pathologists, a point five building case manager, and a point five school psychologist. Walnut Trails has two social workers, a speech and language, one point four speech and language pathologists, part-time, point five building case manager, and a point five school psychologist. I know MIS just added additional social worker and counselor this year. So they have three social workers, one point six speech pathologists, one counselor, and a school psychologist. And the junior high also added a social worker, as I mentioned, and a counselor, so they have three social workers, one speech pathologist, three counselors, and one full-time school psychologist. Some of our other related service providers are through our Grundy County Special Ed Cooperative. Right now, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, the behavior consultants, our autism itinerants, vision itinerants, hearing itinerants, and our adaptive PE teacher, those are all through the cooperative. I know we've talked about adding occupational therapists and behavior consultants hired by the district next year, and that would just be able to assist our teams with providing additional supports for those sensory and behavioral needs for our students and staff, and then be able to provide additional trainings and professional development.
They travel between schools?
The Grundy County staff does.
And the other staff of the other schools, I mean, do we have?
Some of our staff? Some of our staff does travel, like a lot of the building case managers travel between two schools, and our psychologists at the elementary level travel between two schools. Some of our speech pathologists do this year too, just to kind of help higher need buildings. The next slide just kind of goes in a little bit more about our latest service providers. Like we ju, I just mentioned in the prior slide, this is just a better visual of some of those staff. And again, like I said, some of them are hired through the cooperative. Alright, our goals for the department are to decrease the number of students receiving services in their home school. I know we talked about adding and bringing back some self-contained classrooms to some of our elementary buildings, but we want to maintain that resource and co-teaching environments in the district. We'd also like to decrease significant behavioral concerns within the educational environment, providing additional professional development to staff on student behavioral supports, social-emotional learning, executive functioning, and self-regulation strategies, and also increase behavior, social-emotional, and regulation supports for students. We also would like to continue to decrease gaps of students with disabilities from their non-disabled peers by providing targeted instruction and interventions for students with disabilities, and increase positive student behavior by providing additional sensory and behavioral supports with, and like I just mentioned earlier, by adding occupational therapists and behavioral consultants to the Menucha 201 staffing. That's all I have for special education.
So, before we, sorry, this is really loud, I'm sorry. Before we go further, I wanted to bring up a point or two and ask a question. I know the beginning slide said the, to the maximum extent possible, to the LRE, to the least restricted environment, right? It's my interpretation that that means, or should say, to the maximum extent appropriate, right? So, using that wording, appropriate for the student themselves, for the other students, for the classroom, for the staff. So, if we switch those words from possible to appropriate, I know in October, we talked about the self-contained classrooms and what that looks like as far as maximizing the services we provide to, first of all, the special education student, and then all of the students inside of a classroom that are, to use a word, affected by these services provided. So, that leads me to my question, I'm sorry, do we have aides in buildings with varying degrees of specialty? Or is one aide in a room very similar as far as skills or certified wise to another aide in a different room? Because obviously, they could be interacting with very different students. And sorry, before you answer.
No, go ahead.
No, I wanted to, I should've said this at the outset, I meant to, that the amount of challenges brought to 201 every day is astounding. And I think you and your team just do a fantastic job, whether it's putting out daily fires or going long-term with providing services. But I did, while we're talking about this, want to kind of get your input or feedback about whether it's going forward next year with the self-contained classrooms, or altering the skill sets of aides inside of classrooms, where we are, or where you all see us as far as the maximum extent appropriate, and that, as that umbrella's for everybody involved, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I want to unpack a few of those questions. So when it comes to our paraprofessionals, so our paraprofessionals most definitely have varying backgrounds, right? Because some of them may come to us with some experience, or maybe they have been in our district for ten, fifteen years already, so they have a vast amount of experience there. We do offer training to our paraprofessionals. Some of the different trainings this year has been through, we have the crisis prevention training, where it's de-escalation and helping students to identify prior to a child going into crisis and putting supports in place. In addition to that, our aides throughout the district have completed the PlayWorks training, which is also problem-solving and focused on collaborative learning and collaborative relationships with students, student-to-student, but then also students with staff. And that training we focused throughout the first semester, and I, we should be finishing up most of the consultation visits and the site visits throughout this month. And then, in addition to that, our team here offers paraprofessional training at the building level. And then also, if we need to, if a principal calls us and says, hey, we've got some concerns with X, Y, Z behavior, could you come in and work with our team members, then we do targeted supports for the paraprofessionals as well. Yes.
I had another question, but I don't know how to phrase it, so I don't wanna.
Okay.
I won't, I won't go ahead.
We'll have more time for questions.
I'll come back to it at the end if it, if it pops into my mind. But I did want to just tell you all that it's, it's really amazing how much effort is put into making sure the students are safe and that they're, they're learning. I do think there's a lot more conversation to be had, though, about what, what is the actual maximum extent appropriate versus, versus other, and that's what we talked about in October, I think, that what are other options available to us? Because it would, it would seem, it would seem like we, we sometimes find ourselves out of good options.
And when we talk about that least restrictive environment, to that maximum extent appropriate, I completely understand the changes in the wordings there. That is something that is looked at individually for students based on their individual education program and the team that sits down looking at that student's data. So that's, that's a process that the team members, especially Ms. Lustig leads the teams at the elementary school and Ms. Bonnerick at the intermediate junior high, will work through individually with students and the teachers, as well as the specialized staff that you guys saw a couple of slides ago, for the related service providers. So they all sit down in their specialties and bring that to the table. And one of the other areas that we were hoping to look at for the upcoming year is the addition of more behavioral supports. I think it talks about it on this team, or on this slide here, but looking at the possibility of bringing in behavior specialists as well. So we, Mr. Cronin asked about, you know, do those staff go throughout the district? But our behavioral specialists that we have from the county go throughout the county. So we're sharing three behavior specialists with their intensive needs programs and then schools all throughout the county. We would like to look at having some behavioral specialists here in Menucha to specifically work with our students in our buildings. Yep.
I'd like to add a little bit to, maybe this would help, as far as you were asking me about the paraprofessionals and specialties and whatnot. We have district, and then we have the Grundy County Co-op folks also working. So I don't know if you're wondering about specialized as far as our special education versus our Grundy classrooms? If that was what you were kind of getting at.
Yeah, no, I, I, based on the answers, and I think you're sharing that, I, I have a good handle on what you were, what you were saying. I think the, the, the second part of my question is probably for another time. It's more about the specifics of deciding how we interact students and staff, and that's probably, maybe for a different time, we'll have that conversation.
Thank you.
So I believe Ms. Martinez is coming up next to talk about multilingual services.
Good evening, my name is Erica Martinez, and I oversee the multilingual services department here in Menucha 201. I'm gonna briefly go over some of my responsibilities as the coordinator, as you can tell, there's many of them. But as a district, we strive to embrace all of our students' linguistic and cultural differences, and at the same time, allow them to grow and value their own home languages. So we never want to strip away their home language while they're here with us in Menucha. So while I do support the multilingual students and staff, part of my responsibility is also training and allowing parents to see themselves as part of their educational, their child's educational journey. So I do lead the B-PAC as well. But overall, my main job is to make sure that the students have equitable, equitable access to academic and language supports while they're here in our district. This is our caseload currently, we are sitting at two hundred and sixty-three students. As you can tell, the majority of our caseload is at Jones Elementary, followed by the junior high, and then MES. At the junior high, we also have our highest parent refusals. Those are usually due to the students feeling like they are going to be singled out. They also struggle with the idea of being in a CO-TAC classroom, because at that age, they are very aware of themselves, they're very aware of who the ML teacher is and who the gen ed teacher is. And they do not want their friends to pinpoint, say like, oh, you're going to miss Huse's class because she's the ML teacher. So they're a little bit more concerned about that, and that's why most of the parents decide to withdraw the students from services. In our current caseload, we do have twenty-nine newcomers, that means that they have, are new to the country within their first three years. They're learning about our culture and also the language. We have seven newcomers at Jones, seven at MES, five at MIS, five at the junior high, two at MPC, and three at Iwana Trails. You can also see my staff, right there, we have two teachers at Jones, two at MES. At the junior high, Mrs. Rizmuzen joins Mrs. Huse's for one period out of the day to support with newcomers. And we also have an ML associate who works at MIS. We have currently forty-three different languages in our district. The first top language is Spanish, followed by Polish and Romanian. Seventeen percent of our caseload is duly identified, meaning they have an IEP as well as being multilingual. And our multilingual caseload reflects five percent of the district's enrollment. I have several goals for the department, but most importantly, I want to continue to support the students in a way that they feel that their needs are being met. I don't want to make, I want to make sure that we're not stripping away their culture and their home language. I want to make sure that the students and the staff are being appropriately supported, and that can be done through professional development and restructuring the services as needed. The goal for this year for access is that five percent of the multilingual caseload will achieve English language proficiency as defined by the state test that's called ACCESS. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So how, how is your communication with the parents? I mean, you've got forty-three different languages, I mean, is, are they supportive of what we're doing? And is your lack of communication at all, or miscommunication?
So the state requires that we support translation or interpretation of documents like newsletters, extracurricular activities in the top three languages. So we are sending anything that comes from my department in Spanish, Polish, and Romanian, as well as English. I have highly encouraged all the building administrators to do the same, even on their social media posts, because it is an ISB requirement. However, there are instances, for example, when we have a newcomer who's, let's say, speaks Urdu, and we know that that family is not going to understand anything, even if we send it in English, then that teacher will then communicate with the classroom teacher to make sure that they send the newsletter in Urdu, and anything that we send from our end in that language as well.
So when they come here, is this like their first time in the US, or are they transferring from another school around the area?
No, it's their first time here in the US. We actually even have one child who traveled from Guatemala with his sister here, met his dad here, but he has siblings back at home and his mother. So it's their first three years of initial establishment here in the US. So they're getting used to our culture, our schooling system is different. I was having a conversation with the Romanian eighth grader, and he was telling me that he was really tired because in Romania's school, the school day is much shorter than ours. So even their school dynamics and structure are really different than ours.
And are they fitting in well within the school and activities, friends, after school?
For the majority of the part, they are acclimating themselves to our expectations and our culture. They do have questions, like when it comes to food, I was having a conversation with a mom who's actually Portuguese, and she said she looked at her lunch menu, and she was a little bit terrified, because she said, you know, in Spain, we usually have boiled chicken with a side of veggies and a side of rice, but you guys are giving double cheeseburgers. So it is very interesting to see how they view our school system, and also learn from them at the same time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ms. Martinez, we just thank you so much for you and your team, all the work that you all have done over the years. Speaking with some of our colleagues across the state, what we're hearing is a lot of families, right, from diverse backgrounds, will, when they're looking for homes, of course, the school system, which is from everyone, you know, they prioritize education. But then, not only is it education, but then also assimilating with, you know, different languages and everything. And it sounds like we're doing a pretty good job of helping students assimilate to, to English and everything. And it would be great, as we continue to move on, that, you know, these families are targeting Menucha as one of those areas, the districts, to help support them. I, I know just many of the districts in the, in the state, they, just some of the people, they just don't realize how supportive that we are, and we're growing to be in District 201. So thank you to you and your team, and however we can support you, just please continue to let us know.
Thank you.
Is your bilingual parent committee still as active as it has been in the last couple of years? I know I went to a meeting last year, and this room was so packed, we had to take children out to the playground. So I'm just curious if you're still seeing a good turnout and good engagement from the parents.
We still have to take children out to the playground. Just the other day, Dr. Staub and I held a session during the day. The B-PAC president wanted to try it out in the morning, she said, let's see how much of an engagement we, we get or turn out. We had a few moms, but they had a really good conversation. We'll continue to do them in the evenings, since that seems to be a better turnout for our families. But we actually had one mom who came up to me the first session, and she said, Erica, my husband had put our house my husband had put our house for sale and I convinced him. Fine, solid, but we're renting in Shorewood because I need to be part of this B-PAC. So she's still here. So she kept teasing me, like, we're here because of the B-PAC.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question, I'm sorry.
Not yet.
I just want to know, you know, with the parent refusals, and as you mentioned, they, their kids, they don't want to be singled out. Now, if, if they're part of the program and then, you know, like their friends might be calling them out or anything, or something similar to that, and as the child might leave the program, do you all have exit interviews with the families to, to find out for sure, you know, is that the reason or what is the reason why you're leaving the program?
So when they exit out, this year actually, at the September conference that Dr. Stav and I attended, they mentioned the whole, they did a whole overview of state refusals. And they encouraged the districts kind of dig a little bit deeper and find out why it is that parents are refusing services. So that kind of lit my curiosity and I wanted to know why, especially because at the junior high, half of the caseload is parent refusals. So I wanted to ask the teacher or the parents why, and some of the parents said that. And actually, our B-PAC president is a junior high mom and she said, I think the next step, and she's like, of course, I'm not the teacher or the coordinator, but the next step could possibly be to get an ESL endorsed ELA teacher or social studies teacher. So that way, A, you're not struggling with staffing, but B, the students are not going to be able to distinguish who the ML teacher really is versus the classroom teacher. And I think she's on to something that might be a possibility once we work into restructuring our program just to, you know, meet the needs of our changing clientele, that that is something that we could definitely venture into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe Ms. Bonnerick is coming now next to talk about multi-tiered system of supports.
Hi, I'm Nicole Bonnerick. I'm the Student Services Coordinator at Menoka Intermediate and the Junior High. Can you guys hear me? Okay. All right, so I'm going to talk to you about MTSS. So MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. So what we do as the MTSS team and then administrators working with the MTSS team, we identify at-risk students, so students who may need some extra support in the classroom or in addition to what they're doing in the classroom. We collaborate with staff to provide targeted interventions for those students. So they may be receiving tier one supports in the classroom or if they need that tier two or that tier three support, just the interventions that they can utilize for that. We collect the data and review it to determine if students need to move from different interventions or through the tiers. We also identify student need and again, those interventions that they would need to utilize. We provide professional development for the staff on those different tier one interventions they could be utilizing in their classroom. And then as administrators, we also evaluate the MTSS program and the staff.
So the first bullet point, what is the identification? Is it? Is it, is it just talking to teachers? I mean, how are you identifying? What's the criteria?
Yeah, so it's talking with teachers, see how the students are performing in the classroom. We use map data to see where they're scoring on those map scores. Are they above the 20th percentile or below it? And if they're below the 20th percentile, those are the students we'll look at screening to see if they would need some MTSS support.
So once you do that, are the parents then on board or do they, do you have parents that fight back saying?
So we, most parents are very supportive. So once we determine that we would like to screen a student for MTSS, the teacher will call the parents to obtain permission for us to screen them. And then at that time, the parent has the opportunity to say, no, please don't screen my child, or yes, screen them and then move from there. But we do have parents who do decline the services. And then while the students are in MTSS, if they're receiving those tier two or tier three supports, the MTSS teachers will progress monitor them to see how they are progressing with those skills. All right, so our next slide is just a snapshot of the MTSS staff and then those tiers of MTSS. So as you can see, each building has MTSS staff. The elementaries each have one MTSS provider and then MIS has three and then junior high has four. And the buildings also have MTSS associates. So to go through the tiers, so tier one is that core instruction and support. So that's taking place in the general education classroom and the teacher is providing any additional support the student may need in the classroom. When we're looking at tier two, that's when we're looking at the MTSS teacher then picking the student up for services and providing them those interventions. Tier three are the intensive interventions, so those students are getting more than just that one intervention per day, they're getting two interventions. These staff that are listed are the staff that are providing the academic support, the social, emotional, behavioral support is provided by the social workers as well. Do you guys have any questions? All right, and then the goals for the department. So one thing we'd like to do is increase staff skills through professional development, so providing staff with tier one academic and those social, emotional strategies that they can provide in the classroom with the students. And then continually, continue to regularly monitor and review the student progress in MTSS through data collection and analyzing that data. So the teams will get together, look at the map scores, look at how the students perform in the classroom and see if they would still need that MTSS support or maybe if they do require MTSS support. And then continue to collaborate with staff on the needs of the students and any additional supports we could provide them and just making sure we're evaluating and identifying the needs of the students.
Question.
Yeah.
I apologize if I missed it. Do we have a total number of students in our program right now?
I can get you the number.
That are receiving interventions?
Yeah.
We're going to go into that in a few slides. So we haven't discussed that yet, but that's one of our strategic, that's one of the indicators on our strategic goals, so we'll talk about that in a few slides.
Excellent, and then while we're on, so I forget. And it'd be great to just see like the demographic breakdown of those.
Yeah, I didn't pull that for this, but I can certainly pull that for future, definitely. I like that idea, thank you.
And are these students then we would encourage to participate in like our summer schooling and programming, different programs that we have in the summer?
Yes, so we also, we encourage specifically at the Intermediate Junior High for them to participate in also the after-school supports that they have. And then the elementaries definitely we focus on that summer programming, the reading camp and the math camp that we have in, throughout the month of June. But then also our, specifically with like our ML staff, they also do tutoring in the summer and after school for some of our students.
So when a student goes in, is he or she in for the year? Do they graduate out in a month or a couple of months or I mean?
Yeah, so the MTSS teachers will continue to monitor the data. So typically, we'd like about six to nine weeks of data and those progress monitoring data points and then including map scores too, to see how the student's progressing. And if we see them progressing into that average range where they need to be, then we can, we'll discuss with the general education teachers, see if they feel like the student, they're seeing that progress in their classroom too, and then look at releasing them from MTSS. MTSS is also designed to be very fluid, so a student could be released, but then maybe if we see farther down the road, they're continuing to struggle again, we can pick them back up, give them some additional support and then hopefully they'll again, progress out of the services.
All right, so really student.
No.
So what's the difference between this and tutoring? Is it?
So tutoring is typically something that happens outside of the school day. MTSS or interventions happen as a part of the child's school day. Not a stupid question at all, thank you for asking.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, and Ms. Pelnar, she's going to take us into the world of student health and school health.
So I'm going to talk about school health services and my responsibilities. So the responsibilities are implement the school health program for the provision of comprehensive health services to students, supervise and evaluate school health staff, develop, update, implement written policies and procedures for clinical services and school health programs based on laws, regulations and practices in student health, identify and address social determinants to promote student health equity, collaborate with community providers for a range of services addressing student health, act as a liaison with health providers to foster family support and improve healthcare coordination, ensure compliance with state mandated immunizations, physicals, dental, vision exams and emergency action plans, also coordinate and oversee the vision and hearing mandated screenings, participate in IEP and 504 meetings and perform health histories to establish links between student achievement and health, perform and/or arrange for the instruction of school personnel to provide emergency care, participate in truancy monitoring with the focus on providing health services that increase school attendance and supervise reporting of known or unsuspected communicable diseases. On this slide, you can see the health services staff. At the Menoka Primary Center, we have one RN. At the elementary schools, we have one RN in a health aide. And at the intermediate and junior high, we have two RNs in a health aide. At the intermediate school, we also have a one-to-one RN who oversees the care of a student that's medically involved. And then for a snapshot of what our staff does, these are based on last year's numbers. Over 48,000 students visited the health office. This number doesn't include minor visits such as loose teeth, paper cuts, those the nurses address and don't necessarily chart on those. Of the visits to the nurse office, 95% of the students are able to return to the classroom instead of being sent home. Over 7,600 medications were administered to students. This includes daily medications for attention and focus, or they can be as-needed medications such as inhalers, Tylenol, Motrin, migraine medication. And then over 7,900 nursing interventions were performed for students and this involves G-tube dressing changes, tube feedings, catheterizations, blood check, blood sugar checks, to name a few.
Three seconds.
Oh.
So it's 48,000 visits and we have 45,000 kids. I mean, each kid's going to the, do you see the nurse 10 times a year? I mean, like?
No, no, there are some, no.
What can I just talk about like on air? But it seems like 48,000 visits in nine months for 45,000 kids.
There are some children that unfortunately we never get to see.
Paper cuts.
Right, right.
If you were going to glue paper cuts, I'd say okay.
We do have what we affectionately call our frequent flyers who come to see us. They can come for just emotional support. Sometimes students just want emotional support from nurses to check them out. We do have students that do require medications and significant, you know, interventions. But no, not all children come and see the nurse. There are a lot of children that we don't see, you know, that are healthy or make it through, you know, struggle through.
So just to jump off of Mr. Cronin's point, I know that we spoke earlier about how wonderful all of the services we provide and the people that do it and all the things we deal with every day. But I wanted, that number, almost 50,000 patients, if it's a doctor's office, I think that it's really amazing, the service that you and your team provide and really all throughout and the folks standing up, but that number jumps off the page. I think it's, it's really amazing how well, because it's, it's, it all goes well too. So it's, it's really amazing, all the work that is done.
We.
One thing to highlight, sometimes at our schools, if a student has breakfast, they might go to the nurse and say, especially at our elementaries, they, they don't understand that that pain in my tummy is meaning I'm hungry. So they'll go to the nurse and say, you know, my stomach hurts and then we realize they didn't eat breakfast. And the nurse will have things there that the student can eat. At the elementary schools specifically, we noticed that that was happening very frequently and the nurses collaborating with Mrs. Jerry there and they were able to determine like this is a bigger need than just a few kids and that's why we started the breakfast program at Menok Elementary to help with those students that were missing breakfast. So that, that's another incident that might be.
That'd be a successful visit. That would be with that.
Did, in that instance, did you see that number decrease?
Yeah, they, this breakfast program has been very successful and that's maybe something we could think about bringing to you guys in the future and talking about how successful the breakfast program has been at Menok Elementary School.
And these are the ongoing goals for our health services department. And in order to provide an environment where students can thrive academically and personally, we'll continue to consistently apply standards of practice to improve student outcomes, foster self-management and family support and improve healthcare coordination. We will maintain compliance with state laws and regulations related to student health and safety, including undesignated medications. And this year, we've already written and implemented the anaphylaxis procedure and response and have EpiPens in every building that we get for free through the EpiPens for School program. The asthma procedure and response was written this year as well as the stock undesignated albuterol procedures. We also just joined the rescue program, which is a collaboration between the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America, IDPH and ISB. And through that program, we have been supplied with free albuterol inhalers for our buildings as well as guidelines when to use those. And the stock undesignated naloxone procedures were also written this year. And as of January 1st, the state requires that all schools have undesignated opioid antagonists in their buildings. We already have Narcan spray in our buildings that we were able to get free through a local methadone clinic. Another goal is to continue to expand trainings for health staff and school personnel to kill, care for students with medical needs, to comply with the Care of Students with Diabetes Act and the Seizure Smart School Act. Our coaches, club sponsors and some administration are being trained in CPR as well as trainings to be designated diabetic and seizure care aides. On early release days, our nurses have staff meetings and in-services for extra trainings. We have had diabetic educators come in with insulin pumps and CGMs for nurses to become familiar with. The epilepsy foundation has come in for them to practice with new rescue medications. Morris Hospital has come in and done trainings on human trafficking and emergency trauma care. This year, we focused, we've been focusing more on training for our new electronic health record, our SNAP program. But we do get some interest in services in for our nurses. And we will continue to develop resources and provide health programs and clinics to address student health needs. We currently provide a free dental clinic, in-school dental clinic through Orland Park Dental Services every February for all our students. Every June, we work with Morris Hospital and provide a sports clinic for our fifth through eighth grade students. And all proceeds from that, the hospital does donate back to our junior high athletic department. And we work with the National Association of School Nurses for, to provide students in need with free vision exams and glasses through the VSP Eyes of Hope program. And we have good success and relationships with these programs and we continue to look for new resources and programs for our students.
Thank you for that question. And you hit on it a little bit. For our teachers, are they, they're not all CPR trained or is it a requirement or?
No, that is not a state requirement for all of our teachers to be CPR trained, but through the initiative that Ms. Pelnar and our athletic department started this year, we have trained, I, I'm aware of 40 staff members in CPR, the diabetic care aide and the seizure smart training. That's, it's something that all of our coaches as well as club sponsors are doing and that helps, so if I have, if I'm coaching TRAP and I have a student that is after school that has epilepsy or has a, is a diabetic student, I know how to respond if that student is in crisis. So that has been a very, in my opinion, a huge success for not only our clubs, but it has kind of trickled down into so many of our staff members are getting this training as well.
Those laws require that whatever care the student is receiving at school that has diabetes or seizures, need to get that care at extracurricular activities. So they would either need to have a nurse at those programs or a designated care aide. So the coaches have been trained because we only have so many nurses and we have so many activities going on. So for the coaches to be trained to be the care aides at the programs.
Next question, for, and I'm not wanting this number to be high, I'm just curious. So like crisis incidences that have happened at the schools. So like crisis incidences that have happened at the schools, like, do we track those? Like, let's say a child is needing a CPR, and so that gets administered, so are we tracking that?
Yeah, that information is always part of the executive content, that you can see that she submits each month to read.
Yes, yes. Every month, I have the nurse's monthly report, and it's always the previous month. The nurses have a sheet that they fill out for me. It has on their student accident reports, transported to the hospital, and as such. The undesignated medications, luckily, we have never had, oh, I should knock out. We haven't had to use our undesignated epinephrine, Narcan. We did last week have to use our undesignated asthma inhaler, and it worked well. And we were very lucky to have it, and it, and it worked just like it was supposed to, and the child was fine. And it was a child not already previously diagnosed with asthma, so it's exactly what it's meant for, for respiratory distress situations. Yep, thanks.
What type of training do our health aides either get, or what are the, I guess, how do we support the health aides on going when they come in once they're hired? Do they go along with the nurse training?
Yes, yes, yes. So the health aides do the BLS, CPR with the nurses. They do the diabetic care aide training, they do the seizure training. Any of our in-services, the health aides come to, every, like, whatever I, I share with the nurses, the health aides get as well. And they are all receptive and wonderful. They, they, really, we have a great, I have to say, we have a great health services staff all around.
Do you get people with medical experience doing that, or just people interested in supporting?
We do have a couple CNAs. But otherwise, we have a lot of moms, which have great, great first aid, and that mom, you know, kinda, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we do have a few CNAs. That's nice.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any questions? I'm gonna use Stevens. Do a lot of teachers use, do teachers go to the nurse?
Yes, yes. And those numbers are on our monthly report as well.
So is that part of the forty-eight thousand?
No. No, I should have, I should have put that number on there. No, but we do, we do have a lot of staff that come and use the nurse. We do have staff-only medications that we do stock for them. We have the Motrin, the Tylenol, which we go through a lot of, and allergy medication, Tums, you know, anything to keep them in school as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pellner. And to round out our discussion of additional supports is Ms. McCarroll, and she's going to talk about some of those things that may not have their own department, but they're all very vital parts of what happens in every single one of our buildings.
Yep, thank you. So on behalf of being the diversity facilitator for the district and being an admin at one of the buildings, I'm gonna speak briefly about Section 504, Extracurricular Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and then Social Emotional Learning, as it relates to strategic planning goal number two. So the first one here, Section 504. So Section 504 is, it's a formal help for students that are struggling in school. There's a similar process for determinations, like an IEP, the Individualized Educational Plan, and we use kind of the same platform for that. So we've kind of streamlined our process and our paperwork there. You get a team of, with the parents, students, teachers, nurse, support staff. Basically, it's for a child that has a disability or a medical diagnosis that interferes with the child's ability to learn. And then the disability or medical diagnosis must limit one or more basic life activities, such as learning, reading, writing, communicating, thinking. Those are some of the examples there. So we've got the established process. We request, and then we get a team together to kind of look at data, maybe do a health history to see what's going on and how it is impacting the, the student's, you know, basic life activities and their, their ability to learn, read, write, communicate, things of that nature. And then if a student qualifies for 504, we, we have a meeting, we talk about different accommodations, modifications we can do to make that, help that student be successful. And then if, for some reason, if they don't qualify, our, all of our buildings also have a modification for success plan that they can issue to the student, just maybe that the medical diagnosis doesn't impact a basic life activity enough, but the, the team can see that the student struggles and needs a little bit of help, they can put that modification for success plan into place there. The next one I'd like to talk about would be extracurricular. We're happy to announce that you, thank you guys and the MEA for working together to establish a process to creating a club. We are looking at opportunities for all, including K-8. That is something from, you know, staff and students and parents, in particular from the Aid Committee, the Allies for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Committee, that has said, like, what else can we do for some of these younger kids? Because we have the intermural program, but we're, and the ag program, but we're trying to look at other ways we can do that. We had MCC last year. I don't think the turnout was quite what we were hoping for, but we're trying to find maybe other avenues to get some of the younger grade levels involved in that. We're trying to get creative with what and when we are doing. So you guys know, there's a, there's a positive correlation between students having a connection at school and academic achievement. The more connected or the feeling of belonging that they have at school, the, the better those academic achievements are for those students. So that's why we try to have a variety of clubs, sports, activities for students to get involved. The, again, like I said, the MCC had a little bit of a lower turnout, so we're trying to get a little more creative with the different offerings, and we're trying to make sure everybody can find something. So it might not be always we're coming up with a, a new sport. We know, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of activities and athletic activities for kids, but maybe we're, you know, we've rolled out esports at MIS last year, and the junior high will be starting this semester, just an example of something kind of different. Currently, MIS in the spring is going to be rolling out robotics, ASL, art, and chess, and they are gonna continue their esports. The junior high, we are starting esports after break. There's interest, students have come down to take, uh, club starter packets about fishing and animal enthusiasts. We have Dungeon and Dragons that will run again in the spring. We have art club. Our newspaper is in its second year, and then our student advisory panel. In addition, we're, we work with different community entities to get more community involvement. The art show with the exhibit in Morris, they have usually an elementary art show and a kind of junior high art show. The Community Foundation of Grundy County, we just had the Phil, uh, the philanthropy civic contest. We had a couple students from our district win a thousand dollar donation towards a charity, and then a five hundred dollar one. We work with the VFW with the Patriots Pen, the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Feed My Starving Children, and Foster Palooza through Will Find Hope, to try to get more community involvement and getting a sense of service with our students. So those are just some things that we are working on with extracurriculars. Questions on either of those?
I'm sorry, can you, what's the breakdown of the acronym of MCC?
That was the Menucha Community, the Menucha Community...
Connections.
Yeah, yes, Menucha Community Connections. So that was a program that we offered after school last year, two days a week at our elementary schools, and then we had one, one group that was at our campus. And it was an after-school program, trying to get kids more involved and connected to their schools. And then they usually would have somebody from the community come into each of the programs once a month to, like, we had bakers. We had, I'm trying to think of some of the different things.
Jiu-jitsu, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question on the extracurriculars. As we're adding these things, are we looking at their correlation with the activity bus after school, so that students are able to have transportation to their home school, home elementary schools?
Yes, yes. We try to coordinate that as much as possible. We know if, if a student has to leave the activity early, or if, you know, we're trying to find ways for if they have to stay a little later, they can do it. We run into a little bit of a conundrum with the buses not being available till at least after four o'clock, and then trying to have the activity multiple days a week for more than an hour, and, and then have, playing that waiting game. So we try to navigate those, those situations as they come up. But yeah, we, I would say we're having a little bit lower turnout with the activity buses, but we saw that a little bit last year. I would, I would assume during the track season, with it being a non-cut sport and so many people, students, you know, we get upwards between two hundred, three hundred students involved in that activity, that we definitely see an increase in the student activity bus. I know, for example, the junior high is having a, a dance on Wednesday, and we've got roughly, you know, I think about four hundred RSVPs, and I think a little over seventy students have said that they're using the activity bus to get home for that. So we are, we are seeing a, a use of it. It just depends, kind of ebbs and flows on what the season is, whether it gets utilized a lot or not.
And does an activity say, like, when we present it to families, you know, activity bus will or will not be available for this activity?
Yes, and sometimes that can change on a weekly basis, too, but yes.
Okay.
One of the biggest challenges with winter sports is gym space. So like, for example, right now, we have basketball, boys' basketball is still going on, we have girls' volleyball going on, and then wrestling, and there's not that, there's not enough gyms. So you have to kind of stack the sports to have access to those gym spaces, but the vast majority of the clubs are able to run right after school, which is very beneficial.
Any other questions?
Yes, for the activity buses, that was a great comment. The, I know, we're still picking up or dropping them off at the local schools, right? Like, elementary school, whatever's closest to their home. And I, I've heard feedback that that has been some challenges, and I'm not sure if we've even had that conversation. Have we looked at or outlined any alternatives in trying to, in that would uptick, you know, the people using the activity buses? But I know some of the common complaints or feedback was, you know, and I'll use it for my kid, my, we drop our kids off, but, for an example, Jones is across the street from our subdivision. If my child was to take the activity bus, he would get dropped off at Jones and then have to cross busy road. And so, you know, other alternatives, and like, maybe we drop them off in front of the subdivision, but it's still right there at Jones, right? Just an example. Have we looked at any of these other alternatives yet?
Yes, good question. We've started to look at that. So we do offer a drop-off at Shady Oaks as well, and we are also looking at the, the situation that you brought up about Jones, and then also, like, essentially the Ochs home base, is that a lot of students would have to cross Route Six. So we've, we've talked about possibly adding a stop there as well. We have not necessarily started that yet, but that, that, those are points of discussion to look to add those two stops in particular.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. All right. The next, Student Services Additional Supports, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Learning Opportunities for Staff, that include all of our diverse learners. So that's, you know, students that come with trauma, low-income families, foster families, military families, you know, looking through the lens of race, ethnicity, religion. An example that I can think of, like, okay, so, you know, having different activities ready for a student who may be due to religious beliefs currently. We've got a student that isn't going to study a Christmas carol for religious beliefs, but the, the teacher already has different activities ready to go. So it's just making sure that we have that diversity lens through everything we do, whether it's curriculum, professional development, teaching strategies, so that we can meet everybody's needs. Going through a unit of study noticing that's left out of perspective or lacks a variety of resources, understanding how our multilingual learners learn and have strategies in place for the classroom for those students, and not having to have the ML teacher come in and do those, but the ELA teacher or the math teacher is, is successfully implementing those. Reaching out to low-income families to ensure they have and are aware of the resources in a respectful manner, and teaching students conflict resolution through play or group work and discussions. Those are just some examples of kind of that diversity lens. In terms of social emotional learning, the curriculum is multiple layers with that. So we have, you know, our second step curriculum, and then the playworks, our recess curriculum at the elementary schools, that is, is SEL curriculum. And then we've got content curriculum. So, you know, in, in the language arts classes, you might have your morning minutes, you might have your Socratic seminars that talk about how to, how to build off of somebody's comments, how to respectfully disagree. Those are all social emotional learning skills. We're, we're being embedded into group work, conflict resolution, active listening school skills, making sure everybody has a voice at the table. This also includes de-escalation training for staff, the crisis trainings, the signs of suicides at our older grade levels, DSA screeners, and interventions with students who would benefit from them, whether it be maybe in a small group, they have some social emotional learning skills or, or growth there, maybe it's one-to-one, and it's based on the student's needs. Questions on diversity or social emotional learning? Okay. So the goals for the additional supports, increase the number of students finding success with correct level of support. I, we want to identify and intervene early, whether it's a 504, an IEP, MTSS, Modification for Success Plan. The second one, increase level of student connectivity through additional extracurricular and summer offerings. So we know that there's a positive correlation between connected to school and academic achievement, as well as a, a lower number with attendancy and truancy issues. If kids feel a sense of belonging, they have an activity to work towards, they're gonna want to come to school. So adding more variety to our offerings so that everyone has something to be a part of, and that includes our summer offerings, whether it be our math camps, our reading camps, but maybe we're doing outdoor rec, or make and takes, or pickleball, or whatever the case may be. And additionally, academic support. So maybe a, a student wants to move into an advanced class, but then we can offer a summer class to kind of help bridge that gap. That's what our summer bridge program has done the last couple of years. We want to help our students find success in any way they can. The third point, continuation of staff learning with an emphasis on application skills. So we do a lot of learning for the staff, for our students, for the administrators, but also the, the teachers want time to make those things and think through them. So we are making sure when we are doing professional development opportunities, we're leaving time for the staff to either make and take, or, you know, revise maybe an upcoming lesson with some of the tips or tricks or strategies that they're learning from those professional development opportunities. And I'm gonna speak more about some of those professional development opportunities a little later on in another slide. And then the fourth point, increase staff awareness and application of social emotional learning strategies. We've got class offerings and professional development for staff learning, I'll talk a little bit more about them, and then decrease in students struggling with social emotional learning. It's finding that, that intervention to help close the gap, so that they are with their peers in terms of their social emotional learning. We're getting to the point where we want, like, diversity to, it's not just an added thing, it's not an added training, but it's, it's the lens that we view curriculum through, that we view professional development through. It, it just kind of happens, so it's not like we're having to have this, you know, a diversity lesson, but when we're talking about curriculum, everybody knows that we, we need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our kids, no matter what diverse backgrounds that they bring. And we've got some professional development opportunities and extracurriculars that we'll talk about, too, as we go on. Questions for me on the goals? All right.
All right. And I think I will take the clipper from Ms. McCarroll.
You got it.
Thank you. So I am going to take us in to the actual, what's that?
Can we sit down?
Oh, yeah, if you guys want to sit in the front, go ahead. You guys can sit down. I might call you up if you have questions. Sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Cronin. So I'm going to take you guys through the actual goal that we have currently written. So it's cultivate a safe, engaging, authentic learning environment that promotes student confidence and growth. Then we have two aligned strategies for improvement. One is focusing on the MTSS system to close that achievement gap and provide coherent continuum of supports responsive to the needs of all learners. I think that's still a great strategy for us to focus on. It's the second one that I think that we could possibly improve. Develop and implement tools and strategies for assessing and addressing student's social and emotional knowledge, skills, and behaviors. So we have some recommended wording, I'll show you in the next slide. Those measures and indicators is what we're... Those measures and indicators is what we're going to spend the rest of this presentation on. We'll talk a little bit more about how we are assessing each of those areas. So, the recommended wording, again, for that second bullet, is foster a resilient and supportive educational community through empowering students to embody the skills of responsive, resilient, self-advocacy, and compassion. So, during the action item portion of our meeting, we are going to ask that you guys take, take our recommendation and approve the new wording for the second aligned strategy so it would replace that one that's in blue. Any questions on that right now? Most of this wording came directly from the Portrait of a Graduate study. So, you go, actually, the vast majority of that wording did. You'll see that in there, we spoke, our community told us they want to see our students more involved in the community. They want to see the students have those skills of being responsible, being resilient, being a self-advocate, and also being a compassionate member of the community. Okay, all right. So, now when we actually look at those goal areas, so, goal, again, goal two had several measures and indicators. The first one looks at students identified for multi-tiered systems of support and whether or not they're meeting or exceeding their growth goal. So, please keep in mind when we look at this data, you're going to notice that the percentages are very small, but we are in the middle of the reporting period right now. So, when we look at that initial number of 748 interventions provided this year, that's total interventions. So, for example, if Annabelle Staub had an intervention in math, maybe they started with one intervention and then they, once she's mastered that, they move to a second intervention to target her math. So, that could be students in multiple interventions in the same content area, or it could be a student that is receiving an intervention in reading, math, and, and social, emotional, for example. So, it could be multiple points. So, this year, our teams at the school so far, so we're almost at the end of second quarter, they have provided 748 Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. 66 of those interventions have already demonstrated growth, but we typically truly pull that data at the end of second quarter. So, I would expect that number of 66 to greatly increase at the end of second quarter when we pull this information. Our tech team, Mr. Susan and his team have created an amazing dashboard with, within our systems for me to be able to pull this data and then provide it to the schools so they are able to look at the interventions and see how many of our students are making progress, how many of our students are not making progress, but also to look at the specific interventions and look at, is this reading intervention making growth for our students? Is this math intervention working for our students? Does it work with our curriculum? So, that's going to be something that we're actually going to be exploring on the January 8th Institute Day, is starting to look at those interventions and determining, you know, if we have one intervention that we continue to see students aren't meeting their, they're not making growth, they're not meeting their goals, we might want to get rid of that intervention and find something to replace it. So, although these numbers look very low, I, I just want you guys to know that this is mid-assessment period, if that makes sense. So, the second part of those five areas is that we want to see positive student behaviors increase. And this is an area that we are struggling at figuring out, how do you measure positive student behaviors? So, here you see the inverse, you see negative behaviors from quarter one. Now, this is total incidence of students, students having some sort of a behavioral incident within the building. So, you can see that across the board for quarter one. This will be updated at the end of quarter two. Again, Mr. Susan and his team have created a report for me to pull in Power School so I can easily pull this data at the end of each quarter. So, we are still working on how do we measure positive student behavior, but one thing that we're looking at also is to see negative student behavior decrease.
So, forgive me, where do those numbers come from? Is that teacher-reported or administration-reported?
This could be anything that goes in as a behavioral log or a discipline log in Power School.
Is it, do all schools have the same processes, the same procedures?
Yes, and that's something else.
I mean, because one is 64 and one is two. I mean, it's like, it's telling me.
So, they have different students, so that's something to keep in mind. They have different students that they're working with at those schools. However, we are working on norming how the, the administrators and the teachers are entering information into Power School and making sure that we're entering everything in accurately. So, that's one of the things that we have been working on, is ensuring that everybody's utilizing Power School to report student behavior appropriately.
So, do you have a concern with that? No, I mean, just with the number?
I do, yeah. So, I do have a concern because I want to make sure, one, that we are entering our data, so we're looking at accurate data. That's my biggest concern. My next concern is, okay, so if we are looking at accurate data, why do we see an influx? And we do know that we have different students, right? And we may have students that have more behaviors in one building than we have in another building. And that's, that's to be expected, but the other thing we need to look at is with that individual student, what can we do? So, we have to look at it globally, but then we also have to look at it individually, and what can we do to support that student better? And that's where those individualized plans come in. That's where working with our social workers and our behavioral specialists will come in as well.
Yeah, to Mr. Cronin's point, it, it strikes me that outside of missing services being off, we could be missing successes too.
Yes.
Right? We could be missing, just like you said, all of the data in that case.
Yes.
And then question on, I mean, Ochsable to Jones to Walnut Trails, those buildings are very similar, right? But Ochsable, they're, that number's so high. Do we, any, any idea on, you know?
Yeah, the teams know specifically why that, why that number is so high, and it's, we've, we've had some behavioral incidents at that building. We have some students that we're working through behaviors with, yes.
Is this individual students or just instances?
Instances.
So, it could be multiple instances could be the same child?
Yep, exactly, yes. Yeah.
I have a question about the positive, the student behavior.
Jen, can you go closer to your microphone?
Sorry, don't reach. I have a question about the positive student behavior. So, you said you're struggling with how to track that?
Yes.
So, what is, and I may have failed this understanding, this is part of the strategic goal, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. What is the point of, like, what is the goal? What do, what do, what are we trying to achieve by saying, oh, we have an increase in positive student behavior, when it would just be the inverse of negative, lower negative student behavior?
Yeah, so, the, the purpose of phrasing it, looking at positive student behavior is that that's ultimately what we do want. We want to see an increase in positive behaviors of students. We want to see more positive interactions with peers, more positive interactions with staff members. We want to see kindness and we want to see that empathy, but that is difficult to track, where it is much easier to track when you have a student sit down to the office for negative behaviors. But the goal is, yes, to see a, a decrease in negative behaviors, and that's the data that we can capture right here, but we also want to work with our administrative teams to try to see more positive behaviors from students as well.
So, what, other than having expected behaviors in the classroom while we're at school, is this, you're looking for above and beyond, like so-and-so said something nice today and they got a sticker?
It could be that, yeah. So, like, I'm gonna, we've got a few of our administrators from the intermediate here. They have a program that I'm going to talk about in a little bit, where they highlight all of those positive behaviors and encourage and then reward them. So, that's something that maybe if we're able to track that, how many times that they give out those different positive behavioral incentives. Or at the junior high, they have some positive behavioral incentives as well, like at Ochs, they have, it's called Ochs Bucks, I believe, and then at Jones, they have something similar. But at Walnut Trails and MES, they might call it a little bit different. So, do we track those sort of things and how would we track that? And is that the same across all boards? Where this is a little bit easier looking at negative behavior to track. And that's, that's why I put this one up here with the negative behaviors, but ultimately we do want to focus on seeing an increase in positives, but I, I don't think you can completely ignore negative behaviors either, correct?
Well, absolutely not.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, I'm sure you are too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why it's difficult, because if we're having expected behavior, I mean, what can we ask for?
Yeah, true.
Dr. Staub?
Yep.
Could we, and I, and I apologize if you said this is coming later, but it would be great in the future possibly if we can just get a breakdown of these numbers and even, like, if it is, you know, one particular child or just understanding the numbers too. And I know that we're going to do the positives.
Okay.
You're, you're looking to do that, but it would just be, I mean, that Ochsable number's so high. And then, again, not to, well, just understanding it and then, you know, what's the demographic breakdowns with that as well?
Okay.
With the, and you know, is it, you know, how can we help?
I'll see what we can do there.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So, this next one looks at, again, it looks at, I'm sorry, this is the same data point, but it looks at what are we doing to encourage more positive student behavior? So, each of those summarize what they're doing within the building, but I thought I would blow that out a little bit more and share. So, for example, at Menoka Primary Center, their big initiative is the Bucket Filler's. And I'm not sure if you guys have ever heard of the Bucket Filler's, but it's a really adorable children's book, and then they have broadened that into multiple books, but it focuses on when you do something positive to somebody else, it not only fills their bucket, but it also fills your own bucket. And we all want to be bucket fillers, because if I'm filling yours, I'm filling mine as well, but if I'm dipping into your bucket, I'm also spilling out of my bucket. So, that's where you see negative behaviors or kids being harmful to one another. So, it's a really cute student book, and if you're ever at Menoka Primary Center at about nine o'clock in the morning or about 1:05 in the afternoon, you'll hear them sing the Bucket Filler song. I'm not going to sing it here because I can't carry a tune, but it's a really cute song. So, that's something that they do. They also have implemented Second Step for the Early Childhood Program, and that has been a very big success for them as well. At Ochsable, they have the Ochsanding, the Ochsstanding Student of the Week, where teachers nominate students weekly per grade level, and the students are announced in the morning, they get to paint their hands and they put it on the Wall of Fame there at Ochsable, and then a certificate is presented to the child, their pictures in the newsletter, on Facebook as well. They also have Wednesday winners, where students earn Ochs tickets if they are showing that they are accountable, understanding, and excellent. Ochsable tickets or Ochs tickets are turned in to a central location, and then five random students are selected every Wednesday to come and choose a small prize. In addition, they have student leaders to help with dismissal and recess, and those leaders can also help during those recess games, and that comes from the Playworks training that our staff has completed. And then also depending on student needs, they may have different behavior incentive charts as well. They also highlight and recognize two staff members each week for going above and beyond, and then those staff members are announced on Friday and they have a front parking spot in front of the building, which in any of the buildings, one of those close parking spots are heavily wanted, so. At Jones, they have worked on their positive behavior initiative. They have Jones Cash, Cash, which used to be like a gotcha, but it's a similar focus where students are allowed to earn rewards for themselves individually as well as for the classroom. There, they focus on, they can earn that Jones Cash and then purchase things from the store. And then each month, students are selected by teachers for Students of the Month based on their six character traits. The students are recognized in a monthly assembly as well. And then, again, they have, you'll see consistently throughout the buildings, they all have individual behavior charts for students that might need that. At Menoka Elementary School, they have Thumbs Up Thursday, which is positive office referrals showing their character virtual virtues. They get a certificate, they get to sign the Wall of Fame, they get a positive phone call home, and then a reward from one of the lists. They get to choose from a list of rewards. They also have virtue tokens, which staff can give the tokens to students to use in their gumball machine that has prizes in it. And then they are also starting the Golden Tray Award for Lunchroom Behavior. So, that's when they see students having positive behavior in the lunchroom, they get to use the Golden Tray at lunch. So, just another way of highlighting some of the special things there. At Walnut Trails, they have the PBIS. They utilize something similar to PBIS, where students are explicitly taught how to be respectful, responsible, and safe throughout student-made videos and then reiterations of those virtues in the morning announcements. Students can also earn the WT Bucks for being caught demonstrating those expectations. And then each month, students can purchase prizes using their bucks, they can enter raffles using their bucks, or purchase experiences as well. Some of their experiences might be like they get to be a principal for a day or something like that, which, again, highly coveted. And then they bring in outside providers through their PTOs to, again, reinforce all of those expectations. At Menoka Intermediate School, they have implemented a new behavior expectation in the system, focusing on their positive habits. Again, their ma, and they created a matrix with expected behaviors being respectful, responsible, and safe in all areas of the building. So, they talk, you'll see, if you go into the intermediate building, they have their matrices up in the hallway, in the classroom, in the locker room, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria, and it talks about what is the expected behavior in this specific location or, or area. And then in that matrix, they also have a token system where the, they are focusing on a community approach to that. So, the student, a staff member can reward a student for positive behaviors, but they reward their team. And then the teams compete to raise a flag up in the cafeteria, and then it's, it's almost like a, an honor thing for the teams to be the one that get to raise the flags. And then they also have incentive programs within their teams. And then I did link their full, they have like a three or four-page description of this. I linked that into here if you guys would like to see that in more detail. At the junior high, they have Quatchu cards, which are handed out to students. This ticket's category is Quatchu being kind. Last month, for example, was Quatchu being responsible. So, the students, the study hall or advisory class with the highest number of tickets that the students received will receive a traveling trophy. And then with that kind of competition between the study halls and advisories, they also reward responsibility through work completion, and at the end of each week, if a class has no missing work, they receive five extra tickets for that contest. They also have Spirit Fridays and competitions, again, with their study halls and advisories to see who's participating in the most, in the most Spirit Fridays. So, that's a quick summary of what's going on within the buildings, talking about some of those positive behavior supports and incentives. Again, if you want to go through the Menoka Intermediate one in more detail, it's linked in this slide deck. It's a great program, and I would say their three administrators are here and they've, they've seen some pretty great things come from that throughout the building.
I just want to comment, I, I love that. You know, we, we need to reward good behavior and, and of course, you know, kids and people were, were expected to do the right thing, right, and be kind. However, to reward good behaviors, it's great. I know me as a parent, I'm not perfect, and, you know, and my son can say, you know, it seems like you're only saying something to me when I'm doing something wrong, right? And so, to reward good behaviors, it's, it's a good thing. So, thank you.
All of our schools focus on that teach-model reinforce, because students need that reinforcement and, but they also need to know what that behavior should look like. So, that teach-model reinforce is really key for those expected behaviors.
Do you think at the end of the year, like, do they recognize the best student for the nine-month school year? Do they, is there any kind of reward or awards type of thing?
So, the schools do have some different end-of-the-year things. I don't know if any of them focus, we've got a few of our administrators, if they focus strictly on behaviors or if you focus more on like academic achievements?
At Ochs to be doing a little, like, to get a golden ticket, which gives you the opportunity to socially participate in the incentive, so we do some of those incentives and then they may get drawn to participate in the incentive, you know, that. But most of our participants are around here.
And did you guys use this every, is this the same that you use every year? Like these are, I'm assuming each school comes up with their own bucket fillers and?
I mean, we'd like to keep it spicy so that they're invested, but yes, it's primarily the same basis.
And you're in the back of the room and don't need a microphone at all. That's, that's fantastic.
All right. So the next area that we're going to look at is looking at participation. And Ms. McCarroll highlighted the importance of student participation and how that has a positive impact on not only their academics, but we also know that students that are involved and who are connected to their schools have better outcomes in their futures as a whole. Does everybody have one? I made 12 copies, so I think we have several extras. I don't need one back, but you're going to see why I'm giving you guys a copy of this on the next slide. So if you look at this one, this talks about, we started tracking, again, thank you to our tech team because they have been instrumental in this. We started tracking how students are participating in activities. Last year, we had 886 students in the fifth through eighth grade level participate in activities. And that was 1,348 total activities. So for example, if Annabelle Staub was in drama club and cross country, that counted as two activities. This year to date, we have 485 out of 2,015 students participating in activities. And that is right now a total of 1,252 total activities. So that's 36% of our students. But if you look at the next slide, you're going to see there's a lot of activities. And even if you look on, on your chart here, there's a lot of activities that right now, they haven't happened. So Ms. McCarroll alluded earlier that like track is our biggest activity and you can see that on here. We have almost 200 students that participate in track every year. So we anticipate that number being much higher because we're only halfway through the year. So all of our spring activities, like drama club at the intermediate, it has not happened yet. So there's a lot more activities that will happen. The biggest thing that we can do to increase the amount of students involved in activities is breaking down barriers and creating those activities that students want to be a part of. So that's where Ms. McCarroll had spoke about several of those new clubs, those new activities that are being created. And we're listening to the students to see what are they wanting to be a part of? The discussions about our activity bus. So we're breaking down the barriers of students that don't have transportation and allowing them to be able to use that bus after school. Again, that's going to help us have more students involved. And there is study after study completed that tells us that the more students are connected to their schools, the better their behaviors are, the better their academics are, but also the better things are going to be for them after they leave our doors because they felt that they were a part of it and they felt that connection.
This shows like if a, if a student is in three activities, do we know how many kids actually are not?
So that is, if you look at, yep, in 2023, that was 886 students. And then last year, or this year to date, we've had 485.
So 886 out of 2,000?
Uh, yes, I didn't have our total, our total enrollment from last year when I created this slide, but this year we have 485 out of 2,015.
So half the students are participating.
Yes, yeah. Little under half last year.
That's still a big goal. I mean, it's great, but still like, how do you get the other thousands?
Yep, and some of our other conversations have been, you know, if, if students aren't able to participate outside of the school day, are there things that they can do during the school day to help them participate?
So Mrs. McCarroll, do you survey the kids? I mean, like you brought up pickleball or something. I mean, so this is?
So we will, we survey the students, we have kind of like a sense of belonging. Where are the activities you're involved in? Would you, or maybe you did it, tried out and didn't make it? Would you be interested if we had a club? What else would you be interested? Those are all questions we ask. Additionally, that and what, what our staff is comfortable and willing to instruct over the summer programs, that's how some of those things get built. Additionally, like we are, we're living post-COVID. Our numbers have not bounced back post-COVID through our band, choir, through our athletic and activities. Like we are still seeing numbers down. We're still filling teams, but the, the number of students even trying out for some of our club teams is still down. And that's, that's across the state. I'd be willing to say it's probably a national thing too. It's not just a, just a, we don't have to all one thing happening too. It's like training work through that too.
And COVID makes, I didn't think about COVID, but throw it in there as far as, so. I mean, this is great, but it's still like, it'd be nice to get more than 50%. I mean, like much higher, so, but good job. It's just, it's a big, a big ask, a big project.
Still trying. And like you said, the research is there that we can add to either.
I was just going to comment, I probably, you know, with a lot of different sports today, there's just more options, right? Because of COVID, many businesses have come along, you know, from a, a club sport, like club basketball, club football, right? More businesses have popped up because of COVID. So that could probably be possibly what you're competing against as well.
All right, so this is another, one of our specific targeted areas that our student climate survey data will demonstrate a rating at or above the strong level. And this is one that as I was researching our supportive environment. So I'm sure you guys remember from last month when Ms. Massey or Dr. Massey and Ms. Robinson presented and they spoke about a lot of areas within our five essential survey that icon is similar. So our, the supportive environment area has continuously been at the strong level since there, the current window that you can pull data from is from 2020 forward. So we fell in the strong level this year and we have been in the strong level since 2020 in the area of supportive environment. This gives you a little bit more detail about where we're at in strong environment. This is all pulled from the student survey. So you can see this is students telling us specifically. And the peer support for academic work came out as very suprong, or very strong. Student teacher trust came out as strong. The academic personalization came out in strong. And then safety came out in the area of neutral. So I do think we can continue to build on this area and make it even higher, perhaps in the very strong area, but right now we are falling in strong. Yes, yep, correct. Still looking at that one? No, good, okay, all right. The next we have, all students identified as at risk on the social emotional screening are receiving that social emotional support. So from our initial screening at the beginning of the year, we had 254 students that were identified at risk. This was from both the simple screening that is sent out. It's a quick screener sent out to all teachers for all students and the secondary screening that perhaps a student flagged as at risk or maybe a student of teacher had concerns, but they didn't flag at risk. So they did the more in-depth that has more additional questions for the students. So 254 students were identified at risk. 235 students are currently receiving those supports. There were five parent refusals for that social emotional support. So that was something we spoke about with MTSS, as some parents will say, no, I don't want that support. But we did have approximately 19 students that are not currently receiving support and that could be for various different reasons. In speaking with some of our administrators, some of those reasons were they were receiving the support and the child did so well that they've exited out of it now. Some other ones were, you know, they flagged on the screener and then once we started looking at their data, the student truly didn't need that support. So we do believe that all of the students that need that social emotional learning support are receiving it right now through one means or another. Any questions there? All right. So this just kind of rounds out and Ms. McCarroll is going to come up and help me summarize some of the, what are we doing right now? And then what are we going to continue to do to make that learning environment better?
So I'm going to talk a little bit too about last year where we were at with our action plan with terms of this learning environment. So last year, for the first point, MTSS, we wanted the needs assessment implementation. So we were able to actually successfully complete that and we have it implemented now this year. So in addition to having it implemented, we are also needing at least quarterly collectively to review our practices and, and talk more about what the interventions are, whether they're working, what else we can do to provide development for our MTSS staff, our students or the teachers working with the students in the class. The second point, the SEL needs assessment implementation focused on social emotional support and professional development. Last year, we want, we had a needs assessment implementation, the focus on professional development. So we've got our, our second step that all of our, our buildings currently utilize. We also have playworks, which is kind of our recess curriculum, conflict resolution, group work that we are embedded, that's embedded. And additionally, our diversity of learning. So talking about implicit bias, talking about trauma-informed teaching and learning, those types of professional development is happening. Looking to increase behavior supports and creation of a behavior intervention program as well. I know that Mrs. Lustig has been working with Ms. Adler from the Co-op to provide some behavior trainings about some interventions that teachers can walk out of the, the development with to be able to utilize in their classroom that we've heard great things about. The third point, building specific SIP plans addressing student learning environment. So we are doing that through our academic data, through our MAP test, maybe MAP and reading goals, but additionally SEL goals as well, that sense of belonging, that increased activity connection. The fourth one, the additional social emotional staffing to support student needs. We have training, we were able to add a social emotional staff. We added a counselor and a social worker. We've got, you know, our case managers are doing phenomenal work for our buildings to help support our students both academically and socially emotionally. The addition of the school, school security officers and school resource officer. And I'm going to couple that with the bottom one, the additional safety and security training for all staff. That was a big one from where we were working and growing from last year. Those kind of go hand in hand together. So we've got standardized language throughout the district for our procedures. We've got all the like conundrums and the techie things working together with the crisis go and I love you guys and all that language. And we've got, you know, the phones and the, the emergency button kind of ready to go in, in all of our school systems. Everybody has kind of been trained on how to activate those and how to utilize crisis go, which has been awesome. So no matter where you go, no matter what, if it's the school resource officer or the school security officer, the language is the same everywhere. Everybody has been into everybody's buildings to know kind of where to go and what to do and all of that stuff. That's been a huge growth area for us and we will continue to train our staff, our new staff and our current staff as well. The needs assessment for student activities and involvement conducted at MIS and MJHS, we are going to continue to look to add those things. I know sometimes we run into the conundrum of not being able to find a sponsor for some of these activities. So when the students want to create these clubs, they have to be able to find a sponsor to do it. And whether it's conflict of time, they have to do it in the morning because, you know, the kids on a team in the afternoon or whatever the case may be. We, we do try to work through some of those scheduling conflicts, you know, but the, the students have to find a staff member to be able to sponsor those activities too. The multilingual services professional development, I know through the relationship with the PDA, that was a big push last year. We saw that relationship bloom and that's continued to work. But also now we've got our own staff that are actually leading some of those PD sessions in our buildings. And they are, our, our staff is telling us, thank you, we want more, we want time. We were able to walk away from some of those trainings. And we will continue to look and build and, and grow from, from our own staff too. And then I think that's my last one, yeah, because the last one I already talked about. So questions on the goal to learning environment there?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I know you were, you were touching on the school security officers and the safety and security training. And I just wanted to point out, there is, I don't see Mr. Lustig or Dr. Massey, but there is a board report from the two of them in the, the board reports. And it is just so well done as far as the, the conference that those folks attended and then what they plan to bring back to the district from it. So I wanted to make that point here while we're talking about those two items that not just going and doing and bringing it back, but if they were here, I would tell them. It's so well done in the way it is written and presented. So I think that fits here that people are going out and bringing stuff back to the district from what they, what they learned there or what they gathered there.
Absolutely, thank you. And it's actually a great segue for the next one if anybody else doesn't have any questions.
I'll pass that on to them as well.
Yeah.
I actually do.
Okay.
The SIP, the, what is it, student, is it investment? What does, what does SIP stand for?
That is the school improvement plans.
Oh, school improvement, okay.
Yes, yes, which you guys will see those typically in April.
Yeah. Any other questions? That's it, okay. All right, so in terms of professional development, we've got a lot of layers with professional development. We are working on curriculum, instructional tools, and student mindset. And they are very, very intersectional here, like they overlap. We've got admin from the, we've got professional development from the admin level, from the, the teacher level and the student level. So for example, you kind of talked about how Mr. Lustig and Dr. Massey's report was very thorough and that some of the things that I know Dr. Massey and Dr. Staub have worked on is kind of like these little mini workshops within our admin meetings, like these what if Wednesdays that we could talk, like say that there was a security violation, how would you handle it in your building and what would you do? That we're actually taking the time as administrators to kind of almost analyze some case studies and talk about what ifs and how we would do that and how we should do it. And, and time and time again, it comes up like we have made such great gains with the safety and security of our students and our buildings that a lot of these conversations have kind of almost taken care of themselves because of the added, added supports that we've put in that. So that, that's a testament to the work that you guys have done as well. But we've got the legal updates for admin, professional development. We talk about best practices. We just recently had an admin academy brought here within our own district. So usually we have to kind of sign up and either do e-learning or go somewhere. But you know, Dr. Staub and, and Dr. Chesrick and, and Dr. Mann and Dr. Massey have, have helped us be able to bring some of those things here to where we did basically an SEL for staff and students here. That's kind of what the, the message was from that professional development. Deep data dives with MAP is also some of the professional development from the admin level and then Power School data. Our tech department has worked tirelessly to be able to, just where the administrators can get to a point where they can just press a button and get this, this data to be able to look through and analyze. It's been awesome. The staff professional development includes certified and non-certified staff. We try to, you know, work with our, our aides and supportive staff to make sure that they are properly trained, whether it be ML strategies, how to help every student, basically like we want to work on how, how do you make every, every student produce an academic sweat? So we're challenging the kids that need to be challenged, but we're putting supports in place so the kids that need the supports can also, also find success too. Crisis Prevention Institute training, de-escalation strategies, implicit bias, just schools. Crisis Prevention Institute training, de-escalation strategies, implicit bias, just schools, the professional learning communities or PLCs with common assessments and grading practices, trauma-informed decision-making, social skills, our Socratic seminars that a lot of, it's been a relatively new thing for some of our elementaries with the ELA curriculum, how to build off of somebody's points, respectfully disagree, active listening skills. So, we're seeing it embedded in the curriculum and then in the instructional tools. So, like when, maybe for example, when a kid is talking out, we're not just gonna shut them down, like it's not your turn to talk, but it's like, okay Billy, I heard what you said and I know you have something important to say, but right now we're listening to Lisa, so let's go ahead and finish Lisa, but then it's going back. So, it's not like creating a negative self-talk in the kid's head. That's all the SEL and helping with that student mindset support. Everything is tied together, the curriculum, the instructional tools, the student mindset, the admin professional development, the teacher development, the opportunities that we're trying to create for our students. We're really trying to help tie everything together, so we are taking a look at the whole child, right? So, that's kind of where we are with professional development and some of the offerings that we have, whether it's in-house or we get somebody to come in to be able to provide training for us. Questions on that?
Okay.
Can I, not right now, whenever you can get to it, but a list of the professional development trainings and links or information about each of the training seminars?
Yeah, like a little summary of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that.
You got it.
Thank you.
On that note, I had two admin tell me that the last admin professional development you had was the best training they'd ever been to. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, I agree, it was great. It was like how to be a leader, the Ted Lasso way. It was very inspiring, so. Anything else? I think I'm done, right?
Yeah, you're good, thank you. Not quite done, I promise, we're close. My watch actually just told me it's my bedtime, so I promise we're close here, guys. So, this is what we're focusing on in the future. So, you guys have heard it repeatedly throughout tonight. We want to continue to look at that least restrictive environment for our students with disabilities as well as learning delays. Are there students in our co-op programs that we can bring back to their homeschool? Are there students in therapeutic day schools that we can bring back to our homeschool by creating more programming here? So, that's one of our big focuses. We want to develop and maintain service structures that align with the multilingual needs of our students. So, you guys have seen throughout the years how our multilingual population has continued to diversify and the supports that Ms. Martinez and her team have brought back to our staff and our students. So, all staff are supporting any of their multilingual students within their classrooms. Again, we want to focus on increasing our behavioral support so we can decrease negative student behaviors. We do know that we're seeing some negative student behaviors and we need to continue to problem solve and work with staff, parents and our specialized trained personnel to support those students to help them have a more successful learning environment. Continue to research and implement research-based interventions. So, one of our biggest teams between the special education team and the MTSS team, one of our biggest focuses with those teams is making sure that our interventions have research behind them to show that they're effective, because anybody could create an intervention, but we want to make sure that those interventions are actually going to help the students that we're working with. So, we utilize a method for vetting those interventions and making sure that they are actually going to help our students. And then, again, with what our tech team has been able to put together, we can now review those interventions within the district to see if they're actually positively impacting our students here. We want to, again, we've talked a lot about our student connections, so any ways that we can increase student connections to our district, the more connectivity that students have to their schools, the better the students' learning environment is. Continue that student, or the staff training and the professional development. I'm very happy to hear that the admin enjoyed that and it was a very fun, refreshing, great day focusing on creating healthy learning environments and healthy work environments for our staff and students. And then, continue to uphold high expectations within student health and safety. Ms. Palnars has done wonders revamping our overall health program for our schools, but also making sure that we are up to date with all, it seems like between IDPH and ISV, they are constantly updating and adding new requirements for health and student safety. And she is on the cutting edge of that and ensuring that we keep everything up to date within our district. So, in summary, you can see that student services is not just one department. It is multifaceted and it really is, everything that touches our students kind of goes under that umbrella of student services. So, I know that we threw a lot of information at you guys tonight, but are there any additional questions that you might have or any comments that the team can continue to consider?
Well, somebody might have a question, but this is quite a presentation that you and the team, was it forty slides and each one had information on it, there wasn't filler. So, I don't have any other questions, but it was a lot of information and thank you all for providing it.
Agree. Any other questions? Alright, so that segues into our first action item. Action item 5.01, which is to approve, a motion to approve the update to strategic goal number two of the strategic plan as presented.
I'll make, I still move on that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We can do an all in favor on that one, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Okay, on to 5.02, the final 2023 tax levy with Mrs. Robinson.
So, as we spoke earlier in the evening, the tax levy came to us in November with a tentative levy and Ms. Robinson is going to take us through that final levy that she's presenting.
Hello. So, just to remind the board, property taxes currently make up about 51% of our total revenue budget. The law allows the district to make a prediction to ask for or levy more taxes than they expect to collect because at the time of the levy, which is late fall, the new property equalized assessed valuation or EAV is unknown. It's not until early April that the district will receive notification of the actual amount we will receive, which is called our tax extension from the county clerks. So, the first slide shows you the history of our EAV by county. You can see over the past few years, we've seen increases that range between six and nine percent. Based on the information that we have from Kendall, Will and Grundy, we expect that we'll again see about a nine percent increase. Just to know, there hasn't been any changes since November, so this is just really a review for the board at this point. So, looking at the EAV along with the amount that will need to be collected for bond and interest, you can see here there are three scenarios based on a low, average or high change in EAV. And just as we just discussed, we expect to see a tax extension very close to the high scenario. So, that is what we have based our proposed levy on. As I presented in November, we expect the tax rate, as you can see on the bottom, the tax rate to be between $3.20 and $3.26. But again, we expect that we're gonna see near the lower end of this range. This is our 10-year rate history, that yellow bar is the actual, what we expect to see. So, that's gonna be the low, the $3.20. Again, our rate's been very consistent for the last few years and we expect to see just a slight decrease again this year. I've included the next slide just for really any taxpayers who want to know how to calculate the portion of their taxes that go to Monocca 201. And our timeline, we're here at the board meeting. We, the board, we asked the board to approve the recommended levy tonight. And then, we, once we have the levy approved, the levy needs to be filed at each of the county clerks and I will do that this week at Grundy, Kendall and Will County. So, just so the board can see, this is the levy that we are asking, recommending that the board approve tonight.
Questions for Mrs. Robinson? Okay, if there are no questions, I need a motion to approve the 2023 final tax levy as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 final tax levy as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Kenquist?
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Mrs. Robinson. I'm staying, okay.
I was gonna say you could probably stay up there because Ms. Robinson is going to take us next to discuss the sign on the corner of McEvelie and Ridge that announces our campus.
So, just to be clear, we're not asking the board to approve anything tonight. So, this is just to get some feedback. So, we've been talking to the board about needing a new sign, but we've never really gotten feedback from the board as to what they want and we're to the point of design and so we thought we should get input from you. So, again, the status, we're just looking for design right now. Timeline is if we can get some good feedback tonight, we can go back to the vendor that's been helping us with drawings. Hopefully, we would have a final recommendation in January of the actual sign to purchase. That can vary, I mean, that could be February if need be too. And then, we would like to install in the spring to summer of 24. So, the concerns that we need to address, location, design and wording. So, first, location, again, this is where, this is the current sign. And you can see on the little map, it's circled, that's where the sign currently is. So, in working with the Village of Monocca, the sign needs to be 25 feet off of the corner. And quite honestly, it just makes a little more sense to bring it kind of back onto our property. Here's another view of that, you can see it's actually behind some electrical boxes. It's just not really in the right spot, I mean. So, it's just gonna be moved over on the other side of the sidewalk. So, that's not really anything for discussion, I just wanted to explain where that's going to go.
Correct. That, the sidewalk, all of that has been added over the last five years as they, about five years? I'm asking intermediate junior high, how long have they been doing, like the addition of the, they added a berm there and then when they widened Ridge, they had to push things back. So, that has all been changed over the last five years.
Our sign? Absolutely. Okay, so, design. So, one of the first thoughts we had was to mirror the high school sign. So, you'll see the map shows that, you know, if you look, there's the junior high on the left side and then the high school on the right. So, it's really, we're going to be mirroring location where theirs is. So, we thought maybe it should look, it would just kind of be two nice little bookends of that block. So, that currently is the high school sign. And so, this is what, communicating that to one of the vendors that's working on our sign, some ideas that they had. So, first, they brought the first idea. At that point, we had not told them yet to move it, so it's not in the right location, but that first sign. One of the issues we thought this sign had was that it was, it's flat, it's just a two-sided sign. So, we started to ask the vendor, how can we get something that you can really see from all sides of coming in at that corner? So, they threw out some other ideas and that's where we've come up with option two and three. Really, the only difference is three kind of just straightens out that bottom, so it doesn't mirror the high school. Again, that was just a thought, I mean, if the board doesn't like that idea, we want to hear about it.
So, option one is one side sign and option two and three are two signs almost like at a, like a 90-degree angle almost.
Yeah. And one thing to take into consideration, the company had actually done another option that I didn't even include. It was where that middle part, like this open space, that was filled in. So, it didn't necessarily, like this looks slightly awkward having two, but the village doesn't want the sign, there's something in the ordinance that says if it's a raised sign, the base has to be only 25% of the size of the sign. They basically don't want a big thing blocking the view. So, we do have to do some kind of poll to have votes on top. So, I'm not saying you need to pick one, two or three, I'm just saying I want to hear what you like, what you don't like. Because I can go back to him tomorrow and say, what about, do this, this and this and he can create new things for me. I just would like to hear. And like color, the first option had the old Monocca lettering and we asked them to change it to like black lettering. So, options two and three just have like a simpler font. I don't know, I know, I can look at the detail, I do have the measurements on these sides, but I don't know how they compare. But they did look at the high school sign, so I think it's probably very comparable.
Yeah, I would, a couple of comments and so, I'm with Ed. It seems like this is smaller than the high school sign, like it's lower even off the ground. So, to understand, you know, how high that is, because it just seems still small, right? And then, you had mentioned that the village said that it had, they don't want it to block the view, which makes sense, well, if we're gonna be moving it back anyway, then would that necessarily be blocking the view anymore? Because you'll be moving it back even further.
I think the issue is that it's on a corner and we can work with the village and we can see what we can and can't do. So, I can find that out for sure.
Because it would be further back from the corner, like right now, yeah, it's on the corner. But if you're moving it back per the ordinance, so you'll be fine there and then, and then just working so it's not blocking. But I like the top side of the top part of the sign, just if it could be elevated probably. And, you know, of course, digital signs are always good nowadays, right? So, more that you can fit there is always good, but thank you for the opportunity to even give our feedback.
I was gonna say, this is a little new for us, we get to be on the beginning side instead of, oh yes, I like it or I don't. So, can, can you help me understand, is the white one, the two, is it two sides? Is it just two signs put together or is it a cube? Do you see what I'm saying, like is it?
I do, it's, it's, so no, there's no cube to it, it is too flat, it's too flat.
So, from the school, you don't see anything. You see the back of the two-sided sign. So, then I guess my question is, and the blue one is double-sided.
Yes.
So, the screen is on both sides.
Yes.
So, what is the white one accomplish, the blue one doesn't really? You can still see it from both Ridge and McEvelie? Right? Okay, got it.
My question, what's on the top of two and three, like what does it say? Like the words, if they're that small, I think are gonna be very difficult to see. If this is like a bird's eye view of what it'd look like from the car.
Let me skip ahead and then we'll go back because the next thing is the wording. So, what it says right now, if we want to go, let me go back. So, right now, you can see how small it is and true, you can't see it. So, when we initially gave them this, it says Monocca Junior High and Intermediate Campus, that's what the sign says now. So, that is what they did, so that is what it says. It says Monocca and then that one, Junior High and. So, when I showed Dr. Mann this, he said, well, you know, nowhere on the sign does it say Monocca CCSD 201. And so, that was a concern. So, I've, my, the color of the blues I know is off, this is just me playing around on my computer because I wanted to give different options. But these are two options of how we can include, or again, does the board feel that needs to be there? That was just another. So, yeah, I know there's a lot of options, which is why we brought.
I like, I like the look of two, but we did have quite a bit of parent feedback in our portrait of graduate that we encompass multiple communities, so that by including the CCSD, we're including all the students that go to that. So that by including the CCSD, we're including all the students that go to that school versus just saying Manuka. Just one thing to consider. Oh, I see it. Yeah, see, nobody's gonna see that.
I think it's, for me, it's important to differentiate that it is Manuka Junior High and Manuka Intermediate. Where, it's not a district office sign. So I like the idea of, uh, I think number two kinda gets, like you said, as long as you keep the, the logo with the two oh, the two, a CCSD part, um, I think we're labeling the two schools. And, and I think that makes, that makes sense to me.
Which would make sense why it wasn't on the original sign, yeah. So to go back. Um, any feelings about blue versus white?
I hate the white.
I don't, I don't mind going first on the record that I think, I like the blue one. I do agree with, uh, Mr. Blount that making sure it's the right size, if the high school one down the road is much bigger, it would look diminutive in a way. But, um, my concern with the white one is you have a giant back of the sign facing the school. That seems a little awkward to me.
Okay.
Um, so I would, I would agree that I like the blue one, uh, and larger. Not, not larger, like it's not big enough, but a bigger, a big blue, sorry.
I don't like the white either.
No.
But would you like the blue?
I don't like the two signs either. It looks, it just, it doesn't look very professional.
You said the blue doesn't look right?
It's like an Adidas sign.
Does it have to mirror the high school? Can we just have our own sign?
No, absolutely not. No, it doesn't. And so then I guess the question would be, what would you like?
Um, a three-sided sign would be ideal.
So that is actually what, but a three-sided sign, I said that and they said, can you show me a picture of what kind of three-sided sign? And I couldn't really find anything that was a three-sided sign, so, um.
I mean, it, if, I mean, I don't know if it would be like against the village ordinance, but if it was far enough back, I mean, it'd have to be, it wouldn't be an elevated sign. It would have to be something on the ground.
Just like a big triangle?
Basically, yeah.
I like the idea of the elevated. I think it makes it easier to see when you're driving. Um, what don't you like about the blue? You don't like the stripes?
Mary, was brick an option for any of them?
Brick would, um, the orig- very original sign that we got, um, brick was lower. Like I didn't get any drawings of a elevated brick. Um. No. You like the idea of brick? And maybe that's, maybe the color isn't exactly right.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cronin just has something against Adidas right there.
Would the board like, um, would you like me to get more ideas and come back with more?
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay, um, so a brick option. Um, I'll definitely confirm the height, cause I had never even thought of that, that it looked smaller and that could just be the drawings and how they look. It might be the same, so I can check on that. Um, do you not like the stripe idea? Do you want a solid, like?
It would be good to see different versions of that and then also like Mrs. Monson said, a, a three-sided one. Just to, again, just examples, ideas.
Anything else?
Thank you for the opportunity to give our feedback. We gave you a lot of work. Yeah, sorry.
While I, I have you, I wanted, I want, since we're talking about signs and I hope this doesn't sound like a critique more than a comment, is the new sign going into the junior high and intermediate extremely close to the stop sign in front of it, or is that just me?
It's not the stop sign. There's a, a.
Or the speeds, the speed, the speed limit sign?
Yeah, and they're gonna move the speed on that.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, I ca- I can't, I couldn't see it. I just went, I was like, oh, the junior high is this way, that's it.
Yeah, they called them back to move, it would be easier to move the smaller signs.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I'm not, I'm not wrong there. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have any board topics?
If there are no board topics, I would just like to say, um, I would like to wish our teachers and administrators and our staff a smooth few days into winter break and our families a safe and restful winter break from school and looking forward to seeing everybody back in the new year. Administrative reports. Alright, Ms. Robinson, do you have anything in addition to share?
Okay.
Dr. Chazerek?
Good evening. Uh, just a couple of quick notes. Uh, right now, we are finishing up on our winter map assessment. The school started, uh, two weeks ago and this week is mainly for makeups. We did have several students who were out, uh, with illness and so they're making up this week. So the goal is to be finished up before break and then, uh, we'll be looking at that data in January at the January board meeting. So that'll be coming up. Um, January eighth, first day back, we have our professional learning teacher institute that day. We have Greg Wolcott, who's the author of Significant Seventy-Two, coming back. He was with us in October and he's coming back to do part two of his professional development. Uh, if you recall, his book is all about, uh, developing relationships with students and student-to-student positive relationships and teacher-to-student positive relationships. So he'll be back for part two, speaking with all of our teachers on January eighth. Uh, following that, there will be some debriefing time for our teachers to meet in their grade level teams or content area teams to talk about the strategies and tools that they've learned about from the session and actually work on, um, redeveloping those relationships when kids come back on January ninth. Sometimes it's difficult for students to be away from school and away from their school routine for a few weeks. So part of his, uh, presentation will be about how to reconnect with students when they come back from being, um, off for a few weeks' time. Uh, also, on that day, the teachers will be getting together and looking at the data from the map assessments in their teams. And they'll actually be, uh, revisiting their school improvement goals and looking at the data to see if they're in line to have students, uh, meeting the goals. So they'll be meeting for a good part of the afternoon that day, actually doing a deep dive into the data. And as well, our coaches will do, be doing a presentation, um, called Unlocking Every Teacher's Greatness. So just, um, they'll be taking a survey and learning how and we can best provide professional learning going forward in some of their, um, requests. Our new coaches, uh, coaches in training are actually completing their training today. They've had sixteen weeks of training and that went fast, uh, with Jim Knight, uh, weekly sessions. So that's wrapping up today. Starting in January, the coaches in training will be doing some practice sessions, uh, within their buildings. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Chazerek. Um, Dr. Massey and Mr. Souza was not able, they were not able to be with us tonight, so you can see their reports in the board packet. Mr. Souza's was added today, so that was a, a late addition since he wasn't able to be here. Um, I did wanna highlight, um, one other topic since we created the board packet. Um, we were awarded, um, three thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars from the Illinois, um, School District Library Grant. Um, and that is something that we utilize throughout the district each year just to, um, keep our libraries up to date and make sure that we have enough copies of everything, if that be digital or, um, hard copies. So we're excited for that. That's a little bit of an increase, um, that we've had in previous years. And then I just wanted to, um, wish all of our families, staff, and community a very happy and healthy break. We look forward to seeing our staff again on the eighth and our, um, students on January ninth. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions tonight? We have no closed session topics, so with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Somebody's got a second.
We'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Come on, guys.